Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, et liberata in justis or wrong.
We begin the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum? Does anyone here would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, approval of meeting minutes, open session, December 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain, I was absent at that meeting. Open session, January 9th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, January 23rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna bypass the chairman's report to get to an important budget update that Mary Beth Carter and Sean will be taking us through.
We good?
We good.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate that at this point in the budget process that we stop and give an update because a lot really has gone on in the last month or so since we've updated last. When we began the budget process, we started with the budget forecast and put some numbers together, working with what we had done last year, and put together a simulation for what our revenue projections were gonna be, what we thought they might be, and what our expenditure projections might be. And we ran the simulation. And when we did that, Mary Beth also put together her budget message, which was pretty tight. We knew that the numbers that we were looking at this year are pretty lean, and she sent out a budget message to each of the department heads, pretty much in line with the forecast, you know, 2.5% and zero expense. And that was the simulation that we ran, you know, at the late fall, early December. We sent out the budget message, and then since then, Mary Beth has had a chance to meet with each department head specifically and listen to the concerns that they have about each department and their needs and those sorts of things. The department heads have also had a chance to meet with the finance committee and go through a similar process, give thorough presentations. And then we've also adjusted some revenue because we've had some updates with excise tax, that kind of stuff. And at this point in the process, we're now ready to begin to formulate the formal budget. So tonight, we're just gonna look quickly at what the department heads have requested, some of their, again, some of the concerns, expenses and salary, that kind of stuff. And then we'll just look at kind of some of the major departments, and then hit the revenue projection update, and then the expenditure, and get a feel for where we're at. So we can start with the first department. If you take a look at the slide, the fire department has, he's proposing right now, the fire chief is proposing over a 15% increase. Some of this is really coming from all other services, contractual increases with the guys in the union. This also includes an additional day person, another fireman to fill, somebody who's being promoted. The chief and the deputy chief are in a contractual year, it's the last year, and it's also the last yearly contract for the union. The expenses are above 12%, and this mostly has to do with specifically equipment repairs, and the chief can get into in-depth about how the equipment is specifically more expensive than it has been in the past. Service contract increases specifically with Stryker. Utilities, he talked a lot about the fire department not being very efficient and utilities being up. The fire alarm and the sprinkler maintenance, he has some concerns throughout the town about those systems. He has been working with, the fire chief and DPW have been working together on some vehicle maintenance to save some funds actually, and right now, there's no clear solution about the Brokton Hospital situation, so that continues to be a concern. Before we go into the next slide, if you just take a look at the bottom, you can get a general trend over the last five years of how we have funded the fire department. So you can see in FY '20 and '21, those are both obviously extremely low. And then you can see in '22 and '23 and '24, how those numbers come up a bit. But I think that is relevant for us to pay attention to at this point. Obviously, we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions, and this is relevant information, so. With the police department, the salaries, the chief is asking for is an 8% increase, mostly due to contractual increases. And then the unfilled shifts is still a real concern of ours, we've been trying to address it the last couple of years, but it is something that is still very much a priority for us. And there are a number of shifts that are unfilled, and police reform right now is making the hiring process more complex, the difference between part-time and full-time and that kind of thing. So all those things have, you know, been an additional financial burden. Expense line is less than 1% for the police department. And then you can see the trend down below. Similar to the fire department, in FY '20 and '21, obviously very low, and then '22, '23, and '24, up a bit higher. Good. The DPW, they're looking at salaries, or they're requesting salaries, close to 5% or 4.5%. Union salary at 5%, the superintendent at 2.5%. There is an ongoing concern, most of the, I don't wanna get in-depth about the Lexington Plan and the longevity stuff, but just for the board to know, there is still a bit of a concern with some leftover employees, which puts a little bit of a wrinkle in our financial forecast for that department, but something that Mary Beth is working on. For expense, this is what's relevant here, 10% increase in expense, $190,000, and this is primarily from solid waste increase of 12%. But just keep in mind that this is offset by the trash rate. So we'll be collecting a little bit more because that rate is going up. And then one concern to have on the radar, transition to part-time use of the armory. So some capital needs as they transition to use that while the building is being built. And then you can see the five-year trend, like a 3.5% and then a close to a 10%, and then a 12%, but then back down to 5% and 4.5 and 4.21 with the DPW. Good. The library, the library is requesting an increase of 3.8%. The library and the assistant library director are both looking for 2.5%, but the other salaries are primarily contractual. But the expenses here is what we should really pay attention to. Again, this is a little bit complex, but I think it is important for the board to be aware of and for the public to know, that there are some ratios within the library's budget that really do bind us a little bit. If their budget increases, then the amount of money that they spend on books specifically has to increase in order to qualify for a significant amount of state funding. So there are some ratios there that we really do have to pay attention to. Utilities are up, like other departments, but maintenance, this has been a concern that has surfaced this year with the library and a couple other departments. Todd DiCotto, we hired him as the facilities director, and he's given us a very specific recommendation about ways that we can improve the maintenance in the library and the senior center, and also coordinate things in other buildings. So there's a significant, about a $20,000 increase in expense specifically for maintenance. So that's a concern that we're definitely looking into and we should pay attention to. And you can see the five-year trend down below. Kind of FY '20, low, FY '21 at 2%, a bit higher in '22 at 3%, and then 1.7, and then 3.1 Technology, they're requesting a salary increase of 2.5%. Expenses though at 17%, so pretty significant increase here in expenses for technology. And he talked a lot about contractual services and professional development and final migration to Microsoft 365 throughout the town, which is the bulk of the cost there at $10,000. And there's also some ongoing concerns about copy machines throughout the town that he spoke about. And you can see the budget down below, the five-year trend, low in FY '20, you know, at negative 0.2%, and then FY '21, close to 4%, FY '22, above 12%, FY '23, 26%. It was a staff increase there, and then 6.5%. For the school department, we still don't have the official numbers from the school department, but the school has addressed this in a meeting in January, I think it was January 10th, where the superintendent referenced an 11% number for a level service at $1.9 million. The reason why this is important is because this was predicted, they had been doing a forecast over the last five years, and they knew that this particular year was gonna be a drop-off, mostly because of the SFR funds. So they've been using one-time COVID-like grant money to fund some critical positions to help with interventions, but that grant money is gonna go away this year, so there's kind of like a little bit of a gap. So do they keep those salaried positions and ask for more money, or they let those positions go? And that's the tough position that the school department is in right now. Or expect that that number is actually, I don't know, we obviously don't know the number that they're actually gonna request, but the level service number, it looks like it's gonna increase because of the numbers that came back from the state. Even though he gave a relatively conservative estimate, it looks like the numbers that came back from the state actually were worse than that, so. And you can see the five-year trend, 8.5%, 6.7%, 4.8%, 3.9%, and then 5.6%. What's relevant about that is, and I think, I won't take too long on this, but it is important to pay attention to. We looked at the Madden report and the recommended 5%. If we go above the 5%, and this is really in any department, and I think just for budgeting purposes, it's good for us to kind of wrestle with this concept. If we stick to the 5%, then we kind of stay on one certain tract, but if we kind of go above that 5%, then the overall budget begins to become more than you had predicted. So basically, 5% on the current number that we're looking at, which is a little bit over $800,000. If that, if this number was 5% across the board compared to what it was, we're actually, you know, significantly above, almost a million dollars above where we would have been if we stuck to the 5%. This is what makes kind of the budgeting and those limits a little bit complex, but I think it is an important concept for us to really consider. Does that make sense, Mary Beth?
Could I just add that for the budget that I've been working on here for the requests, of course, we don't have the official request in from the high school, so I did put a placeholder in of 5%, which 5% over the last year was an increase of $886,975. I agree, I did the simulation, if we had done a 5% from 2019 forward, this year at 5%, the assessment would be $18,626,475. However, if we had done 5% from 2019 to now, I estimate, or I calculate, that the assessment, operating assessment for Whitman, if it were 5%, would be $17,783,318. Exactly, you know, that difference between having that level 5% and, you know, up and down here, as you can see the history, it would have made quite a big difference to us.
Yeah, this is definitely something for us to pay attention to, for sure.
And that $886,975 that is the increase, that's just on the 5%. So anything above that, of course, is going to be, you know, a much higher impact to the budget.
Yeah, and we can clarify that in the next, one of the next slides, for sure. Yes, a couple other important budget items. Plymouth County Retirement has been a significant budget item for us. We're looking at over a 9% increase, which is $270,000. That is a significant increase. It's very difficult for us to, it's really like a budget kind of buster, that particular item, and it's gonna continue to do that, we know now, for about the next four years. But the good thing, if there is a little bit of a ray of hope here, after about four years, I think in fiscal '29, it'll come off?
Fiscal '29 should be the last year of the pension liability, and then we'll be down to what's called the normal cost, which will be significantly lower.
Meaning, yeah, it's hard to say right now how significant that would be, but we're not talking $200,000 different, much more like a closer to a million dollars different, you know. So we'll see a big drop-off in about four years, but for the next four years, we know that that number's gonna stay relatively high. Health insurance is at 7%. This is the, when we ran the simulation, you're gonna see the budget, two budget simulations that we're running for you to evaluate. We put in Whitman Hansen at 5% in line with the Madden report. Solschroff-Boteck is up at 14 students, and they're requesting for almost a 12% increase, so that's a significant increase this year.
Did that get down to 171?
That's the increase over last year.
Oh, okay.
Increase over last year, yep. Good. This is the updated revenue projection. So just some of the local receipts were updated, and basically, we're up $1.2 million over last year. That's good, good. And then just quickly, so on the left side here, this is what we ran on December 5th. So it was the approximate revenue, the expenditure simulation, and we were predicting a deficit at $273,000. That was in December. Now that we've recalculated with the updated revenue and the updated expenditures based on department head requests, and this is with the schools at 5%, we're looking at about a million-dollar deficit. Which puts us in, I guess, if we go to that, the final, or the next stage of the budget process is to formally construct the budget. And just quickly on this, when Mary Beth sent the budget message, some of the department heads, or most of the department heads, gave what they, really what they think their department deserves, and they're advocating for their budget, which I think they really should be able to do so that we and the public understand what their needs and concerns are. But what they didn't provide us with is what would their department look like if it actually was at 2.5% and 0% expenses? Because unfortunately, that's some critical information that we need to know because we're gonna have to balance a budget. So I suppose in the next couple of weeks, that's the information that we'll be gathering, what will departments look like if they are back down to that original budget message over here on the left, and also integrating the new information from the schools. I think he's gonna give a presentation tomorrow, I believe.
Tomorrow evening at 6:30. And I think that's a posted meeting for us too, because the majority of us are gonna be able to be there.
I have a question. The 1 million over, is that with what the Whitman Hansen is looking for, their budget? You plugged that in?
No, that's at 5%.
That's at 5%.
That's at 5. So anything greater than 5% will increase that deficit.
So if it was roughly, if the 11% instead of the 5%, that goes up by about another million dollars.
Well, the way that, the way things are going for the town right now, we have all these, we got, what, three building projects going? And I don't think an override would pass, you know? We got debt exclusions, you know, on the middle school and on the new DPW. We're still paying for the new police station, we've got a couple more years on that.
We do.
You got Solschroff-Boteck is looking to build a new school because our enrollment is just climbing right up the, unbelievably. And that's gonna increase it, I do not think that an override would pass in our town. And I think departments and the schools need to look at that. And I know that Tom is looking to cut another $400,000 out of our budget, not Whitman's budget, but the whole school budget, you know? And we'll be talking about that Thursday night when we have a meeting. But there's no way the town will go for an override.
I think, I think that's an important discussion for us to have with the school department. If, obviously, people in the community care about education, they've made that clear, it's a priority. And the schools are gonna give a thorough presentation tomorrow on the things that they are able to fund and then potentially won't be able to fund. And that'll be a critical discussion to be had, you know? Should we put an override on the table for the schools so that they can keep some integrity to the services that they built up over the last couple of years? Or do we have to stick to the?
Right, and that's just for this year, next year, it's even gonna get higher. Because they'll start with their base, which is a million dollars more, and it's gonna go higher. I agree with as far as education, but safety of the town is a high priority also, you know, between police and fire and DPW.
Justin.
Would you mind going back to the school slide? I just, so I pulled document 23 off of Whitman Hansen's website. This is their sort of budget projections, a big picture year over year. Just because all of the other departments were looking at actual budget increases, and this is an assessment, I kind of wanted to do a sort of apples-to-apples comparison. So back on that first fiscal '20, Whitman Hansen's budget increased 1.3%. That was an 8.5% assessment to the town, I think we all remember that difficult budget year that resulted in some pink slips, a lot of pink slips in the district, and a lot of expenses cut within the town. The next year, the assessment 6.73 was the beginning of the statutory method transition, was a 5.6%, 5.7% increase in the school budget. Following year was the rest of the statutory method transition, was a 5.3% budget increase, 4.8% assessment increase. Following year, fiscal '23 was a 2.59%, 2.6% budget increase for the district, ends up being a 4% assessment of the town. And the following year, the year we're currently in, was a 3.4% budget increase, is a nearly 6% assessment increase. So just something that we do have to keep in mind, that as they move one-time money in and out of the budget, and as enrollment has declined over the same time period, about 230 kids, so we're not getting more state aid in this process, the towns are being asked to pick up all those increases. So, you know, a 3 and change percent budget increase is a 6% assessment increase to Whitman. So it's, that's one of the reasons that Madden recommended 5% to the schools, knowing that, you know, for them to grow at the same pace as town departments costs the town twice as much as other departments.
Yeah, just looking at those numbers, when it's going 6.73 is when statutory come in, '22 is when we helped Hansen offset it by not, you know, asking for the full amount. And the same thing with '23, we finally got our full amount that we were supposed to get. So it looks like our numbers were going down, but for the wrong reason. It wasn't, their budget wasn't going down, or they weren't controlling their budget as much as we were getting credit for the statutory method.
Correct.
So it's kind of misleading, those few years about, well, our budget went down for '22 and '23. No, it didn't. Our responsibility went down, we saved money because we were getting full statutory amounts per kid.
Likewise, with this year, the lost SFR funds is gonna probably impact them similarly.
Right, so I mean...
And these numbers down the bottom, if I may say, are not a budget, this is strictly talking assessment.
Right, that's why I wanted to do the comparison, yeah.
Anybody else? Mary Beth, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think that we covered it as far as the assessment. No, I think I'm good on this topic.
Okay, tomorrow night's meeting should be interesting. I think, in a way, I agree with Dan, that in order for the schools to deliver the service that they've been delivering at a level, what they would call level service, there's gonna be a need for, Dan didn't say this, but he used the term, there's gonna be a need for an override. The town is gonna have to be, is gonna have to be asked, towns, taxpayers need to be asked, probably by, probably by the school district, for an override, for an operational override. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be pessimistic about an operational override because we need it to take care of the kids. As long as we know that they're spending their money responsibly, we need it. The town has shown last year that they were willing to pay for a new middle school. I don't wanna be pessimistic today and say that the town might not agree to an override if the energy that is put into advertising for an override, advertising the need for an override, going to the townspeople, if the energy is the same as it was this year for the building, it still might be a possibility. But it might be something that we'd need to have happen.
You know, Carl, that being said, I think tomorrow night, which I will not be there during the meeting, but I think it depends on what the school committee decides for a budget. If they're gonna just go for all they want instead of their needs, they're gonna seem unrealistic as far as budgeting concerns. But if they really get down to budgeting and cutting where they can cut and be realistic, you know, at least that's an open door to say, oh, well, they're doing their best. But if they just start adding positions or whatever, especially with the student count dropping, as it is, they need to show that they're willing to look at both towns and what their budget, because I think Hansen is already saying they need an override, even while you're not knowing what the school budget is, they're gonna go, did they go for an override last year? I believe, I thought they might have.
Two or three years ago, it was the last year of the statutory.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have to see what their reaction is and what the school committee is willing to do.
I think we've been able to survive for the last three or four years without an override because of a lot of hard work. We might be coming, but there's some of us who've been saying for years, that in order for us to serve our students in a way that is appropriate, that the town needs to say, yes, not only in a survey can we say that we value the students and we value the schools, but they also have to say that we're willing to pay for it. And I think an override campaign, that I would expect, I would expect the parents and the schools to lead on, that an override campaign has to be well thought out. A couple of years ago, when we had the issue with the Hansen, we wanted to try to, we sacrificed ourselves, I think it was in '22, you said, we sacrificed ourselves so that Hansen could adjust to going to the full statutory method. Where did that money come from? It came from free cash, I think, didn't it?
I believe it did.
Okay, if the school says something that's analogous to free cash, I think they call it E and D.
E and D.
Then maybe they, somehow, they have to be public or be honest about what's there and be willing to use it. So all of this has, all of this has to come to play, but I really don't wanna be, at this stage of the game, pessimistic about the prospects of a successful override, because that might be what we need.
Yeah, but you shouldn't be using one-time money for recurring bills. We used the forty thousand of, from our excess funds because that, that was one time, and then we're going to the full statutory. If you're going to run a budget on one-time money, there's a, there's a time where you have to include that into your budget, you can't be using one-time bu, money all the time. That's good management, good accounting, I mean...
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're really disagreeing. It has to be, if it's, if it's a, if it's a well-thought-out campaign to convince the taxpayers that they need to open up this purse string sum, to have, to have a, a school system that isn't ranked in the bottom ten percent of three hundred fifty-one communities and towns as far as what they, their per pupil expenditure is, then I just don't want to be pessimistic about it right now, that's all.
And if I could...
But it's, it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot of honest looking at how we manage our funds.
And I would just add that the, the town departments aren't blameless here either. As we scroll through those, a lot of those asks are well above two and a half percent, which is what, you know, the prop two and a half allows us to grow. And over these last five years, we have added, you know, a, a full-time position in, in technology, full-time in the fire department, we've taken a couple of part-time positions, full-time in building and facilities, so we've grown as well. And we, the money has to come from somewhere.
Right, and another place they can come from, and this is a hard, this is hard to say, is that we have to, when we negotiate contracts with our employees, we can't be overly kind all the time. Just, and I don't want to get into what went on in Newton, but it's just, this is going to be a tough time.
Can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you can speak if you'd like to, chief.
Thank you, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into these presentations, and I can only speak for my own department, but I've come before the finance committee for a number of years, and the chief before me as well. And over the years, we have been underfunded in our line for salaries, and the police department is driven by salaries, it's driven by personnel, boots on the ground, and the issue there is, and I've mentioned this, and maybe you recall it, three hundred and sixty shifts equals one month of policing for us with our manpower at full strength, and the issue there is we're running a twelve-month budget on eleven months of revenue. So we don't have anywhere for it to come from at this point, and that's the issue there. So some of these numbers are predicated upon you were level funded to start with, which the police department was not. So that's why those numbers for the police department are higher, and they will continue to be higher year after year until we get there. In my conversations with the finance committee over the years, they have indicated that we were going to try and get there incrementally, which is what we've done so far, and I'd like that to continue. But I am always going to advocate for the police department, because that's where I am. I can't speak to any other budgets, I think some of us are in similar circumstances, but you'd have to hear from each of them individually. And I know what it would do to our department, it would devastate the police department as far as personnel goes. And when personnel gets affected, then so do everything else from town parades, charitable events that we attend, that is all driven usually by overtime, and...
Yeah, thank you, thank you, chief, for stepping up and offering that.
Yeah, I'm the only department head here tonight, so, do you have a question for me, or?
No, 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 chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yes.
Maybe just to put this in perspective a little bit, the, the total revenue that we're increasing over last year is just one point two percent for all departments, all town departments and the, and the growth that we'd like to see, even two percent, one point two, one point two million dollars. If the school was at eleven percent, which it seems like at the level service, that's kind of ballpark where they might ask, that's at one point nine million. That's seven hundred thousand dollars over all of the revenue that we've taken in for this year. So you can see the need for, you know, we need to pay attention to this, and, you know, the, the likelihood of an override, or just certainly discussion with the schools about an override is real.
If I may, I do believe on January tenth, they did put out four different scenarios. So I am the optimist here, I'm very hopeful that this certainly won't be the one, you know, that ends up being put forth. You know, there were three other ones, you know, that were lower, and that would devastate us, so, and I'm sure that the schools, you know, would realize that as well. So we'll have to see after tomorrow night, and a department head meeting, I mean, we have to balance the budget, that's the bottom line, so the tough work is right ahead of us.
Thank you. Okay, that, anybody else have anything to say? Okay. New business, you've been very patient, Michelle. Michelle Almatina, upcoming Whitman Recreation Events.
Good evening, thank you for letting me come and speak about a few events the Recreation Committee is trying to plan for the spring and the summer. As you know, Kathleen Woodward, the new rec director, has been like fabulous and helping grow the program, bring in more funding so we can do some events for people in the town. So we were looking to hopefully have your approval on having our annual Easter egg hunt inside Town Hall on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, preferably from like noon to three or so. We'll have eggs and face painting and crafts. We usually have like the library come and donate crafts, and we have crafts, and it's a great event. We do it by age group, it's, you know, last year was crazy busy, I think everybody likes to come, all ages. The next event would be our annual Fourth of July event on the Fourth of July in the town park. Same as every year, we've kind of been building year after year on that, the last couple of years now, we have like a shaved ice person, we have ice cream, we have a DJ, the Boy Scouts come, and we let them sell hamburgers or hot dogs, and they seem to raise a good amount of money for their group, so they enjoy that. And we have races and a bike parade and all kinds of things. So we'd like to do that on July fourth with a rain date of July fifth, if we need to. And then tentatively, we would like to do a movie event inside Town Hall in April, we just don't have a date yet, we're thinking possibly like the beginning, like the first Friday before April vacation, like before people maybe went away, so I guess, Mary Beth, if we could see like what dates might be available. That seemed, we did a movie night last winter, we, we got a pretty decent turnout, but it's nice to have it inside also, so that people can come in the winter and enjoy it, and it actually doesn't cost us much money to do it in Town Hall, where when we do it outside, it costs us a good amount of money because we have to rent the screen and things like that. So just to kind of get our name out there and that, especially, you know, March and April, we're working on, the committee met a few weeks ago, we've set all of our fees for this year, so we're just working with the software company to, hopefully on March first, go live with the sign-ups for some, the summer park program. So, and hopefully, you know, we hire some great people again, a lot of kids already want to come back. Last year we had a waiting list every week, so hopefully we'll get a few more employees this year that we can open it up a little, you know, ten, twenty more kids each week, so the programs all seem to be going good, and people have a lot of interest in them, so this summer we expect no different. So I guess the first thing up was just making sure that March twenty-fourth date would be available to us, if that's okay.
Do we know?
He'll get back to us.
Yeah, we will, we'll check that, and we'll also check for a date for April, but I would say, yes, this would be, all sounds wonderful.
It all sounds, it all sounds great, it's just, it'll be formalized later on.
Okay.
Great, as long as the dates all work out, then...
At our support, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
You've done a great job, Kathleen Woodward has done a great job of program the last few years.
Hi.
It's really grown quite a bit.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of nice emails and comments and things like that, we've even built a little bit of a, there's some people who have like contributed to help some families who can't afford to go, go, so that's pretty good, so we've built up a little bit of funding there that we can help people out with, so that's nice to see too, so.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
Next item is to take action to rescind the Common Vittler's Wine and Malt Liquor License held by Thai All Seasons Incorporated at eleven South Avenue. The business is now takeout only, the license is not being utilized and has been surrendered to the Board of Selectmen's Office. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Act on the request of the Whitman Little League to hold a toll booth fundraiser on Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from ten to, ten AM to two PM. Zero motion.
So moved.
Second.
Your second. Any discussion?
They do it every year, do they have, they don't have a rain date?
They didn't mention a rain day, no. And that, we have the paperwork here, and it doesn't, doesn't say anything about a rain date, I don't think, no.
Hope it rains, doesn't rain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's report.
Yes, thank you. As you all know, the town accountant has resigned, she actually went back to Nor, Duxbury as the accountant there, and so I would really like to fill the position as quickly as possible. We do have, you know, it advertised, however, I'd like to bring in an interim town accountant, and so I did meet with John Adams, he's the retired Duxbury Finance Director.
What was his middle initial?
John Q.
John, John Q. Adams.
Yes, John Q. Adams, and...
Do you know what the, what the Q. stands for?
Quincy.
Is it Quincy? Okay.
We interviewed him on Thursday, Kathy and I, on Thursday, February first. He comes to us highly recommended by Eric Kinsher, a CPA that we've used before, I've checked all the references, and he's willing to start this Thursday, this week, for one day, and he'll be able to give us two days a week. He is retired, that's all he wants to do, he said that up to eight hours a day for two days, and he's not sure what two days for the month of February, but then in March it will be Tuesdays and Thursdays until we fill the position. His hourly rate is sixty-five dollars, which is very reasonable, and I would like a vote from the Board of Selectmen to hire John Adams as the interim town accountant while we actively search for a new one.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, awesome.
No, thank you. We don't want that to go unfilled.
Is that it for you?
That's it for me, yes, I'm sorry.
We need to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Exception Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or the, non-union personnel, and that person would be the fire chief.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Your second. Okay.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And we will come out of executive session into open session only to adjourn. So we are now in exec.